All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call to order the monthly meeting of the Avon Board of Education on Tuesday, November 15th at 7:00 PM. I would like to begin by doing a roll call so that those of you who might be new to attending are familiar with who we are, even though you have the signs to benefit from. I think it's still good practice that we each get the opportunity to introduce ourselves. So I'll begin with board members and myself. I'm Deb Schut, I am the chair. Fage Singh, vice chair.
Here, Deb, thank you.
Jeffrey Fleischman, secretary.
Here, thank you.
Jackie Blaia.
Here, thanks, Deb.
Laura Young.
Here, good job.
Lisa Semenera.
Present, thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Katz.
Present, thank you, Deb.
Thank you. Liz Summercorn.
Here.
Excellent. Sarah Thompson.
Here, thank you.
Thank you. And our administrators, Dr. Bridget Carnamal, our superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Mr. Justin Nene, our assistant superintendent.
Here, thank you.
Mr. Roberto Medic, our assistant superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Ms. Susan Russo, our business manager.
Present, thank you.
And Ms. Shirley Moy, our executive assistant to the superintendent and our board clerk.
Present, thank you.
And I'll make a quick announcement that if you would like to speak this evening, the sign up sheet is on the round table over to the side here if you'd like to sign up for that. But if you would stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would like to begin by reading our mission statement, which seals the work that we all do here together. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. So now is one of my favorite parts of the meeting is Avon Achievers. I would like to invite forward Mr. Sturman, Ms. Horvath from Roaring Brook School. You'll come forward and announce our Avon Achievers.
Thank you so much, Deb. Always an honor to be up here and share the great things going on in our district. And Susan and I are really excited this evening to welcome up two different individuals whose roles have become increasingly popular and increasingly necessary over the last few years. So I'd like to invite up Mr. Chris Mashad, who is the RBS School Safety Security Specialist. And as Chris makes his way on up here, we're honoring Chris because while his role is written in the job description of kind of taking care of us from a safety standpoint, what he really does as an individual is take care of all of us from a different kind of a lens. He makes connections with our students. He sings songs in the cafeteria on a regular basis with them. He welcomes our families every morning and afternoon and builds those wonderful connections that are so critical to making everybody feel comfortable. And he has become really, really beloved by our staff for the positivity and energy that he brings in a role that is really, really critical. So, Chris, thank you so much. We're so delighted to have you part of our team.
Chris, if you wouldn't mind, we would like to present you with a certificate as well.
Wanted to make it official, by the way.
Thank you so much. Thank you for doing what you do. We appreciate you. And if you don't mind, if you stand behind, we'll take a picture afterwards.
Thank you. Thank you.
And to echo what Mr. Sturm said, we also wanted to recognize Mrs. Lauren Sterren. And she is our board certified behavior analyst, or BCBA with all the acronyms in education, shared between Roaring Brook and Pine Grove. And similar to Mr. Mashad, the position is increasingly necessary. And we are so lucky and appreciative of Mrs. Sterren's work with our students to support and promote positive student behavior. And Mrs. Sterren is not only working with our students, but also working with the adults that assist those students and working alongside teachers and case managers and paraprofessionals to ensure that everyone's on the same page, to help make each student his or her best self. And she does it with a warmth and a positivity and a bounce in her step every day. We look forward to her time at Roaring Brook, and she has been a true asset to our staff. Thank you, Mrs. Sterren.
Thank you so much. We appreciate having you. Please join us, we'll take a picture.
We made that work last time. This side, right?
Come a little closer.
Think that makes it easier?
They should be you.
One, two, three, one, two, three. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
So I'm sure there are many of you that came to celebrate them with us this evening. So we are thrilled to recognize them. And we are lucky to have them in the district with us. So thank you for taking the time to do that with us. If you notice when you came in this evening, hopefully some of you walked a little further down the gallery space and were able to see our student interns coming back to life. We are re-energizing this program and we're thrilled to have these students starting us off. So if you are willing to stay and hear them present, I would love to invite forward Tashan Haynes and Ms. Mascoli if you wouldn't mind coming forward and introducing our students to us.
All right, hi, everyone. I'm Maria Mascoli, and you all know Tashan Haynes. I'm so delighted to be here and bring back the showcase for our internship program. This is the first time since 2019 we've done an in-person showcase. So super excited to be here and recognize our eight summer interns from last summer. So I'm going to turn it over to them. If you guys want to come up. We have Alexa Faust, who is at the Theatre Guild of Simsbury. We have Lakshmi Jetty and A.K. Kumar, who are both at the Hartford Healthcare of Cancer Infusion Center. Chloe Keever, who worked at Today Publishing. Ricky Paul, UConn Health at the Richard Berlin Center for Cell Analysis and Modeling with Dr. Blinov. Raj Sheff, who was with our Avon Public Schools Technology Department. Claire Volpe, who was with UConn Health Center for Regenerative Medicine and Skeletal Development with Dr. May. And Jack Wang, who was with UConn Health Department of Nephrology with Dr. Zhao. And all of these interns are so excited to present to you and show you just a little bit of what they did this summer. So guys, come on up.
We're acceptably proud.
Alexa, in the meantime.
All right, hello. My name is Lexi Faust, and I did my internship with the Theatre Guild of Simsbury. I was their assistant stage manager for their summer series at The Vineyard, which was at the Lost Acres Vineyard in North Granby, which was right here. We had our stage right here. This was our performance space. So as part of my role, I would make props. That is Walter right there. He was a little sock puppet I got to make. I managed and transported equipment. I was in charge of hanging up and taking down the curtain each night because we had to set up our, we had to take everything down each night. And then I would also monitor backstage and give actors their cues in order for them to go to their places to start the show. And what I learned during this internship was how a show comes together from a producing and technical side and how to handle certain equipment, such as hanging up the curtain, and then how to adapt to technical mishaps during performances because we had a few. And then impact on my future. So I've always had the desire to pursue theater. So this really affirmed that for me. But mostly I focused on performing and possibly directing. But by doing this internship, I was able to learn how producing and stage managing works. And I hope to also pursue those in the future in order to get a well-rounded experience in theater as a career. And just a side note, the reason why I'm dressed like this is I'm also in CLU at Avon High School. So please come see the show. It is this Friday and Saturday at 7:30 PM. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lakshmi. I interned at the Infusion Center. It was like in the town line between New Britain and Plainfield, so it was both. But I would help check in patients and I would help like them bring up the wheelchairs. And then I would help disinfect and sanitize the rooms and refill the medical carts. And I would help like with lunches and snacks. But going in, I knew I wanted to be a doctor, but like this internship really made me certain. But my impact on my future was it gave me a really good understanding of what a hospital environment was like, and I really liked it there. So, yeah.
Hi, my name is Chloe Keever, and I was an intern for Today Magazine. So my official title was reporter and editorial assistant. So I did all kinds of things. Like I ran the website. I added like tags so more people could find it. I wrote articles. I actually interviewed a local veteran as a big part of my internship, and I got to write an article about him, which will be coming out hopefully in the December edition. I also wrote about Dr. O'Neill for the September 2022 edition. And I actually had a lot of involvement with external communication. So I was calling a lot of town halls and town libraries to get in contact with them because the magazine is fully remote right now. So we're trying to kind of spread the word about it. So I kind of learned a lot about how to be a better interviewer, how to be a better writer. And I realized that I'm really passionate about journalism. And it kind of inspired me to go into something even bigger, like broadcast journalism. And so I kind of just gained a lot of communication skills. And I got to explore a lot of things that I was really passionate about. And what was great about my internship is that since it was fully remote, I did like half of it from Canada. So I did like a lot of really important stuff that I was passionate about while I was on vacation. So it was really nice. But I really loved to be able to get in contact with that better. It was like probably one of the most important experiences I've ever had in my life. And that was just in September. So I don't know. I just feel really passionate about that. And I'm so glad that I was able to write for this magazine.
Hi, I'm Ricky. I worked at the Richard D. Berlin Center for Cell Analysis and Modeling up in the Farmington, UConn campus. And so what I did over the summer was work on the development of a plugin to help transfer data between a biological modeling software known as VCell into an image processing algorithm known as ImageJ, for which the purpose would be to aid biological researchers in simulating cellular systems. For example, to say, test and simulate how different drugs or cancer treatments would affect a cell before you would want to move on to testing on biological systems, such as humans and animals beforehand. And the main thing that this internship did for me was expose me to what like a job in like a professional academic setting would be like. And I found that experience to be really helpful just because I never really had such an experience before. And another thing was that it told me that although I really wanted to work in the field of computer science, that field had a lot of different applications in various other fields. Originally, I wasn't sure if I wanted to do this in the first place because I saw that it was very heavily biologically related and I didn't have any interest in that. But having done this internship, I realized that I could take my knowledge and my interest and passion in computer science and apply it into all these other various fields to really help out a lot of other people. So, yeah.
I'm Raj. I work with the Avon Public Schools IT Department. So some of you might have seen me around. I was covered in box. So I did work at the main office at the Avon High School, at Avon High School mostly. I was at PGS for a little bit, but it wasn't like too much stuff to do. So mainly what I did was I installed new software and security on some of the computers here and Mr. Dubois' room. And I helped set up the new Mac, the Mac lab. You know, I just unloaded the Macs. My favorite experience was taking the E-Waste. So like all the smartboards that got replaced by the bank keyboards, just old mice keyboards, things of that sort. Just going down to West Hartford facility there. You just dump everything. I also liked some of the laptops that you guys are using. I did like scan them onto the software. I'm sorry, I scanned them into the system. So this kind of solidified my interest in computer engineering. It showed me like what a typical IT job might look like. Yeah, I enjoyed this experience.
Hello, so my name is Claire Volpe, and I did a summer internship at UConn Health in Farmington. And my biggest responsibility, as well as my favorite experience, was working with embryonic stem cells, which included feeding them with different solutions and watching them grow, looking at them under microscopes, which was really incredible. I also learned that these cells are extremely significant in the way that they can regenerate and repair diseased tissue, organs, and human body. And PCR, which was a procedure I learned while working in the lab with Dr. May, was where samples of DNA can be multiplied, therefore amplifying it. And I think the most significant thing that I learned was that research means constant learning. And I'm really glad that Dr. May continuously said this to me. And it really just kind of encouraged me more to go into the field of medicine.
Oh, hi, my name is Jack Wang. I'm a junior student at Avon High School. I did an internship in the past summer at Dr. Joe's Lab in UConn Health in Farmington. I went to Dr. Joe's Lab for two months for a total of 120 hours. I worked with my mentor and learned how to autoclave lab equipment and make chemical buffers. And I also learned how to culture cells to determine the effect of chemical inoxia and its effects on like cell growth and proliferation. I also helped perform histological staining of mouse kidneys to validate degree of damage to them. I performed Western Blonde to examine kidney protein analysis with the other intern there. My favorite experience was learning how to be a team player from working with my mentor and the other intern. My internship impacted my future by reinforcing my interest in biomedical research and teaching me these valuable experiences that I could use in future internships and projects.
So before I invite you to come and take a picture with us, I do want to take a moment and recognize Mr. Haynes and Ms. Mascoli for spearheading this and relaunching this. We are incredibly proud of this. So to see it back in action and thriving is thrilling. We are so grateful for all the effort and the heart that you have put into this. And the students that have participated, it's quite impressive what you ended up doing and what you learned from it. But I know that these places that have accepted you were grateful to have you as well. So thank you for showing off Avon to our community. And thank you to our community for welcoming in our Avon students. So again, another round of applause. Take another group photo. Oh, okay. She gets her rehearsal. Just a little closer, guys. Yeah.
Okay. One, two, three, one, two, three, two, two, three.
And parents, if you want, certainly you can grab a photo as well. Come on up. If you want to get a better one. Did you get one? Would you like a better photo? Come on up. We're still here. We're happy to stop. Get your child.
Smile.
Thanks, Lynn. Thank you. We're so proud of you. Thank you. All right, so I guess it's a good time as well. Since the snowflakes are starting to fall. If you joined us this evening for this purpose, we will not be offended if you want to excuse yourselves and get home safely. Thank you for coming out. It was wonderful to meet so many of you. Moving on to the business of the meeting. If I could please have a motion to approve the Board of Education regular monthly meeting minutes of October 18th, 2022.
So moved.
All right, Jackie, and a second. Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
This is unanimously. We had two special board meetings regarding legislative updates. So on the same day, we had a morning session with some board members. So if we could have approval of the minutes of the Board of Education special meeting minutes of November 3rd, 2022 at 9:00 AM. Lynn, we'll move that. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And then our evening session of the same topics. Board of Education special meeting minutes of November 3rd, 2022, 5:00 PM meeting. If I could have a motion to approve those. Okay, Laura, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Fage, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you, everyone. Now we get to the part of communication from the public. Do we have anyone signed up?
We do. We have Alex Chen from 27 Scarborough.
So just for consistency, I will read our instructions for communication from the public. This is the section of our meeting where Avon residents have the floor to share their thoughts and/or concerns with the board. It is not an opportunity for conversation. Rather, it's the board's chance to listen to feedback from the community. Please add your name to the list. Ms. Moy will then call on you in order. You must state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. In an effort to hear as many of you as we can, we must adhere to this time limit. You can certainly state that you agree or disagree with the previous comment if you prefer to be brief. Brevity will allow more attendees to be heard. After 15 minutes are up, the board may choose to extend public comment or not. No speaker will include charges or complaints of a personal nature against any individual Avon Board of Education member or individual employee of the Avon Board of Education, whether the speaker names the individual or not. Please refrain from clapping or cheering. Ms. Moy will be our timekeeper tonight. If you should reach two and a half minutes, she will alert you with a 30-second warning. At the three-minute mark, you will be alerted again to signal that your time is up. We welcome your engagement and participation. Dr. Chen, if you'd like to come forward.
My name is Alex Chen. I live at the 27 Scarborough Drive, Lima. About half years ago, half year ago, I brought this issue. I realize students at high school are sharing their phones to play video games. And when you come to think about it, they share porns too. Pornography, okay? And some parents, their choice, they don't block porn or their kids' phone. So your kids go to school, they can share pornography with each other without anybody's knowledge, any official's knowledge, okay? And that's their right to have not blocking their kids' phone. But that's my right to have my kids not be exposed to pornography or other things inappropriate. And but school policy and the board policy enables that thing because you allow students to bring phone to high school and they can share at their leisure time, okay? In school, which hurt our kids mentally and performance-wise. And yeah, I don't know how many, how many parents are here and anybody want your kids share porns in school?
Mr. Chen, just direct your comments over here.
I ask this again.
Thank you.
Okay? So I am not surprised. So I've been sent around. I complained to board members, board chair, and school principals, school assistant principals. And I was sent around, and so far, no policy has changed. Kids are still being hurt, okay? And all you need to do is say one thing is you don't let them use phone during school, during school time. They can keep their phone for emergency use just in case there's shooting or their parents calling and a teacher can approve. So it's a very reasonable thing you don't change your policy and hurting my kids. And I said I got to send around by officials. And I talked to various people and wasted all my time. And people are collecting my private information and present to me as if it's my family issue. Let me tell you, it's not my family issue. It affects everybody, every race, every economic level, okay? And the Torrington School, they banned the phone. And that's not because there are all kinds of Chinese people living there, okay? So it affects everybody. And I say this not because I like one side or the other. It's because of power structure. Democrats, you need to take your action and save my kids. Save all our kids in school, okay? And you need to hold yourself accountable.
And. Thank you, Dr. Chen.
And talking about accountability. You know, Biden, when he disrespected a reporter, he would apologize. I tell you, our statement is anti-Tan. Elaine Degrow.
Okay, we're not going to name any.
Hand up on me when I talk about this issue and do the personal attack on me. And she's above Biden. Biden would apologize.
Excuse me, Dr. Chen, you've had your time.
A month and a half.
Dr. Chen, I'm going to have to stop you. I'm going to have to stop.
You need to hold yourself accountable.
Okay, thank you.
You're in charge.
All right, we're going to move along. Next piece is items of information and proposals. We have our student representatives with us this evening. We have Charlotte Perry and Lillian Peng. And again, ladies, I'll let you decide who would like to go first.
Okay. First, I'll start off with Avon High School. So for the past month, it's been pretty exciting. We have our annual Powder Puff Football Game this Sunday. I know that there was so many signups that they're having, like they're having trouble deciding who's going to start on the field because so many people have signed up. Fall sports are coming to an end, so athletic winter registration is now open. In addition, Avon High School and Lewis Mills High School are competing against each other for who can raise the most perishable food items. And the winner will be announced at the next upcoming football game on Tuesday. In addition, the junior class is having a fundraiser at Porta Veriata this Thursday to raise money for their class and probably go for the upcoming prom. In addition, as someone already mentioned during our internship presentations, our fall production of CLU is coming up and will be presented in the auditorium also upcoming this week. Next is Avon Middle School. They have announced that the Boys' Cross Country Team defeated Smith Middle School of Glastonbury to 19 to 40. So that's a big win for them. I know they're pretty excited. The AMSPTO is hosting their annual Turkey Bowl and Food Drive that they participate in every Thanksgiving. They have their first edition of Bo's Beer Cast, which is their school newspaper, which they are distributing online. Next is Thompson Brook. Their student council is supporting local homeless shelters next week with also daily food drives food drives and collecting other items for those in need. They also have a musical, which they have begun tryouts for, so I know they're pretty excited about that. The PTO is also hosting their annual book fair after Thanksgiving break. And lastly, they have raised over $300 for breast cancer research in October. So a lot of exciting things in the past three schools.
Thank you, Charlotte.
All right, for Pine Grove School and for Roaring Brook School, the Holloway Perine on Monday was a success, and teachers and old students were able to reconnect, and the kindergartners and first graders had a lot of fun spending time with the senior students and seeing how the high school kind of was. On Election Day, there was professional development for every teacher in the Avon school system, and that went very well, and they were all able to learn how to run a better classroom. And the Veterans Day event last Friday, the veterans went around to all the town, sorry, to all the schools in town, and they were able to spend time with the students, and there were different musical performances, poetry, and students were able to sit down with the veterans and have heart-to-hearts. And then finally, for Pine Grove this week, they have the Scholastic Book Fair run by the PTO. That's all.
Excellent. Thank you, ladies. It's good to hear all that's going on in the schools. Next is our financial report. Ms. Russo?
Good evening, everyone. For the month ending of October 2022, we ended the month year-to-date with a 9.9% unencumbered fund balance of over $5.8 million compared to the year prior of $5.5 million, or 8.79%. We do have budget transfers, and we can send in later, that address some of the items on the highlights memo. Budget transfer 2023-02-5, that's some allocation of funds between different salary lines. We finished onboarding the rest of our staff, both in administrative positions and teaching positions throughout the month of September, and a few of those started in October. Also, in our non-certified salary lines, we have some various due to staff movement and onboarding in September and October. And we also have some degree change stipends as those teachers who finish completing their additional degrees move forward in their steps and turn in their paperwork, so there was some transfers related to that as well. Other expenses, our rising costs in global markets continue to see cost in electric, water, gas, telecommunications rise. Supplies and textbooks, we have variances due to pricing, shipping increases, again, related to the global inflation where our fuel costs have gone up and the vendors are trickling that down to the end buyer. Budget transfer 2023-15 through 22 shows some small variances that the schools have asked to clear because of these issues. Special education, we have $1.6 million unencumbered currently with 43 students and outplace programs. Some of those programs are full, full day, others are part day, sharing services between the high school and Farber and some other locations. We have four students in escrow, and the majority of those unencumbered funds are for that, those escrow payments that we will make at the end of the year. In transportation, there is budget transfer 2023-02-3, which is clearing some lines, some variances we had, some savings in our summer, extended school year transportation lines that we need to move over to our wheelchair lines if we had some increased student needs this year. Also, given the utility rising costs, as well as some other supply chain issues, we have implemented what we call a soft freeze. We just implemented that last week. That allows for is to curb spending so we can ride out the winter as these utilities, as we always see snow. We went from 70 degrees and 30 degrees in one day. That does wreak havoc on utility bills. So that soft freeze allows us to continue to buy those necessary curricular items that we planned for to make sure our units can move forward, but it addresses the needs rather than the ones we may have, and we can save those larger purchases that we don't put need right now to yet further in the year and make sure that we're able to ride out that time.
Thank you. Are there any questions by Board members? All right, thank you, Susan. We appreciate it. All right. Next, our committee and liaison reports. Curriculum and professional practices, Jackie.
We did not meet. Our next meeting is December 6th.
All right, thank you. Finance, Lynn?
I have just one question. Is that in-person, the just in-person or?
I think, I think we had decided that they were going to be remote.
It's probably hard to predict till we get closer to- Yeah, I don't think we, we talked about that being efficient, if that's how we wanted to do it. I thought this one was different.
Okay, yeah.
I think it depends on what we're doing.
Yeah. But we can discuss closer to what we get, but I think that was how we were going to do the last, the October meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, we met on November 9th when Susan Russo discussed the budget transfers and donation letters we reviewed, and she's already mentioned the fact that there's a soft freeze and the administration is keeping a very close eye on expenditures due to the unknown, the big unknown, which is the continued rise in cost of materials and utilities. And we meet again on December 13th.
Excellent. All right, negotiations, that would be me. At this time, we are preparing to start negotiating with our administrative assistants, but we don't have dates on the calendar yet, so just prepare that that will be our next group that we'll be working with. And then policy, Laura.
So in the month of November, the Policy Committee did not meet per se. However, we did have two special meetings as a whole Board to discuss legislative updates during executive session in the 4,000 and 5,000 series. And then it may or may not be a meeting in December depending on how we proceed.
Capital Region Education Council, Jackie.
I was unable to attend last month's meeting, so I'm going tomorrow, and I will forward the minutes from the last meeting to you all.
Excellent, thank you. All right, next is the Board Chair update. I wanted to take a moment to recognize that I had the privilege and the honor to attend the beginning of Veterans Day, which I think is very special in Avon. Not every school district keeps their doors open. They take the day off, but we benefit from having our veterans travel around to each of the five buildings, as well as the town green, tell some of their stories to students. And it started at the middle school, and it was handled so well. We got a list of the itinerary of how that will proceed. We marched in with the veterans, the messaging from the, I'm not sure what his rank was, but he was so impressive when he spoke, making it very personal to when we say, "Thank you for your service," his response is, "You're worth it." And it just hit in a different way, and I think for the students that they might have heard it a little differently too, but they were young when they were in the service, and so to just have that full circle. So it's so impactful to know that these gentlemen and women that have given of themselves make this time for us because the students matter to them too. So I just wanted to recognize that that was really an honor, and I'm thrilled that that is a tradition that we do here, and it was very well done from beginning to end. I know Dr. Carnamal was able to make it to all of it, and she certainly had her administrators in tow with her, and it's just really the level of detail. Every school does a different song that correlates to the different service. It's just impressive. So nothing is redundant. It's quite well done, and I think that the gentleman that travel around to really enjoy that, and then when they get to the high school, they get to meet some students who are considering that as a career, and we have females on our staff that participate in that as well. And it's just, we have a lot of veterans amongst us, and I'm grateful for their, their service and their time. So I just wanted to say that. And now I'll go to Dr. Carnamal for her superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just, I'll start with the hiring report before turning it over to Mr. Medic. We have currently posted for a safety and security specialist here at the high school. This is an additional position to what we have already. As you know, we have discussed doing this for years, and going back and forth about, first, the budgetary concerns related to it, and also, as you know, over time. We had some difficulty in recruiting safety and security specialists in the years prior until we went back and made some updates to their contract, and as you saw by meeting another one of them tonight, we have a great crew of safety and security specialists working with us, and I think we have some great potential candidates in the pool right now. Ms. Russo worked with me to be able to find the funding for this salary through the ESAR funds. As you know, we keep revisiting those and how they're utilized and making sure that we are making the best use of them, the school districts we can, just as they're doing on the town side, and as needs shift, we revisit the grant funds. So we are able to fund the salary for the remainder of this year out of ESAR funds. We'll have a discussion about that in the budget process, what that might look like for next year, but this is what we refer to as the swing shift safety and security specialist. We had been looking for years to add someone in. That came in a little bit later than the others and therefore stayed later, so that at the end of the day, other still activities going on, sports and so on, that someone is here at least until 5:00. We're looking at a possible nine-to-five shift for this, so we're excited about that, and thank you, Mr. Connolly. And Mr. Medic, I know is still going through applications, and we're hoping he might be interviewing before the Thanksgiving holiday. And Mr. Mac, I'll turn the rest to you.
Good evening, thank you. We remain fully staffed with all of our certified positions. At this point, we either have a permanent certified staff member in every classroom or for several individuals who are out on medical leave, we have certified substitutes in their place. We have had a very good month in terms of filling several of our non-certified vacancies. We did have three resignations, two resignations and one retirement, and I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Ms. Shirley Moy, who will be retiring from the district in December, and we still have her for some time left, but we'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you to Shirley and know that you'll be greatly missed by the entire district.
We'll do it more officially at the last meeting.
She didn't know we were-
I'm not ready for that.
So that's the hiring report. We, we continue to have some openings that we are working to fill as the superintendent mentioned, safety and security specialists and some other non-certified positions.
We're also still searching for an IT technician, and we're in the process of the search for accounts payable clerk after our Nat Neil that, so I think many of you knew, got a new job and with a promotion to be a supervisor in another place, so we're pretty excited for her, but it was a loss for us. So we're still moving forward and interviewing, and hopefully by the next board meeting, we'll have someone in that role and also in the IT position. From the enrollment standpoint, as you can see, the numbers are ecstatic from the year before. As I've already said, we're up and down based on enrollment and housing sales. We are still two students short of our open choice goal of 112 students. At least, we picked up a few more since we opened additional seats, so we have 110, working toward 112. And we do have some interested families that are waiting on seats, but right now, those are in grade levels that we have not released any seats into our own class sizes, so we'll keep monitoring that, and if we're able to do, make a change there, we will. In the meantime, we have released additional seats in pre-K for the peers in our program, and notification went out about that from Student Services Office through the Friday flyers on Friday. So if you know anyone with a four-year-old who's looking for a pre-K slot, we have them open again. Now, we are trying to, as you know, keep our program with a commensurate amount of students who need services and what we refer to as typical peers, as we've discussed in the past, so we're hoping to recruit a few more students. Under the strategic plan, Shirley, if you would just pull up, I just thought it might be helpful to put a few things up for you to be able to see. At our last meeting, we had someone ask about the science of readings connection to our English and English arts curriculum and our program materials, and as I said at that meeting, it is something that we will be discussing at the Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee, but since it was brought up at the last board meeting, you know, I tried to make sure we play it forward and answer questions we might have heard there. So Mr. Genie put together just a couple of things to share so that we could put some additional information around that conversation at the previous meeting.
So as Dr. Carnamal mentioned, we wanted to provide you an update. There's been a lot of conversation around the state about the science of reading, and so, you know, a few slides on what is the science of reading, how is it impacting Connecticut schools, and what's the community of Avon here doing in response? So a little background, in June of 2021, the Connecticut Legislature passed the Right to Read Bill, and it's linked in the presentation that was sent with you. If you want to read it, like any bill, there's quite a bit in there, but what we're concerned about is the right to read part. And the bill speaks specifically to the science of reading. You'll see it listed here as SOR, as we've become affectionately knowing it over the last couple of years here in Avon. And what it speaks to is the converging research on what really matters in terms of early literacy instruction for our students, and we're talking specifically about students in our pre-kindergarten up to grade three. So what are the main components of the science of reading? Next slide, there she is. There's five, there's five main components. So listed there at the top is phonics. It also covers phonemic awareness, vocabulary and oral language development, reading fluency and reading comprehension. So it's essentially saying that a strong curriculum is going to have those five components strongly represented throughout. And so what does it, you know, require? What does this bill require? Next slide. So a few things, and again, there's quite a bit that the bill actually requires of schools, but there's some specific things that are really pertinent to us and our work. The first piece is that we are implementing an early literacy reading curricula that's evidence-based, and it's approved by Connecticut's newly-established Center for Literacy Research and Reading Success. And it's important to notice there that we've underlined reading curriculum, and as we go through the presentation, you'll understand why we did that. It's part of why this is being so, you know, hotly debated and discussed across the state right now. It also, the bill did create the center, so it established the Center for Early Literacy and Reading Success at the same time. A good piece that we feel is that it's, the bill wants the state to support administrators, teachers, schools in making sure there's strong professional development, that parents are engaged in the process, so that's a good piece of this. And it also will provide independent random reviews of pre-K3 reading curriculum. And the last piece there that we're particularly interested in is it's going to provide a waiver process, so as districts work through this, you would submit your curriculum to the state for review, and they would then give you feedback and would approve any curriculum, you know, that districts would submit. Next slide. So here's where it gets a little more interesting, I think you could say, is how are Connecticut districts responding to the science of reading? So the why behind the science of reading is widely supported by districts across the state. When it first came out and we saw those big five components, there was no surprises for us. Every good teacher, every reading specialist would look down that list and tell you those are the things we should be focusing on, so that wasn't really a surprise to us. However, the approach is really what's been widely criticized, and many superintendents, along with CAPS, which is the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, are petitioning the state to make some changes to the implementation of this work. Next slide, Shirley. So why is everyone so worked up? Well, in September, the Connecticut State Department released a memo requiring all Connecticut school districts to use one of six pre-approved K, pre-K3 reading programs, and you'll notice programs is underlined again there, by the 2023-2024 school year. And so this really prompted many educational leaders across the state, along with CAPS, you know, to have some concern, and what really is the big concern? Well, the first is that we feel collectively that the state here is confusing curriculum with instructional resources. So we feel we have a really robust, strong reading curriculum here in Avon, and by coming in and mandating the use of six specific programs, there's some confusion there about what is curriculum and what is an instructional resource. So that's one issue. Another issue is that they're using certain programs like Ed Reports to review the programs and to give feedback about whether or not their curriculum. And so what something like Ed Reports does, and this is really like an independent reviewer of programs, they'll look over something like Wilson as a program, and they'll give feedback on its effectiveness. And so essentially, what they're doing is, again, we're talking about curriculum here, which is the spirit of the bill, they're looking at a program like Wilson and saying whether or not it's good curriculum. And so, again, that's a problem. They're also focusing the waiver process, not on submitting your curriculum and having it approved, but on having your programs approved that you use. And again, that's another issue if we continue to focus on curriculum. And last but not least, and maybe what you'd be most interested in, is there's a feeling there that they're overstepping their authority where really that should be left to you as the local Board of Education. So there's where the main concerns come in. So that's how the state, CAPS, and our neighboring districts are responding, what's happening here in Avon. So first, and again, we want to stress this, that we do believe in the science of reading. You know, focusing on those five areas is important for all of our students. We're certainly not pushing back against that piece. We have spent a lot of time, and our staff has worked over the last two years, to really align our curriculum with, you know, the tenants in SOR, science of reading, and we've also purchased some additional resources to ensure that our teachers had materials that really spoke to those five areas. And we've also worked really closely with our curriculum specialists and our pre-K3 staff and continue to provide job-embedded professional learning experiences for them on a weekly and monthly basis. One more slide, Shirley. So we do stand with our neighboring communities and CAPS as we anxiously await some revised guidance from the state. As you can imagine, there was quite the pushback from numerous groups and superintendents across the state as this came forward. The state did come back out a short time later, saying that they were going to go back to the drawing board, for lack of a better word, and so we're still waiting for their updated guidance, so we'll certainly keep you posted. But in the meantime, one nice piece that they did offer is opportunities for districts to be part of a masterclass in the science of reading. So Avon has applied and been accepted into the second cohort, which will begin its work in November and work through the month of May. There's some professional development for our school leaders, our curriculum specialists are building principles, and there's also some executive coaching that goes with it in terms of looking at our curriculum, looking at our practices, and giving us specific feedback on how well we're implementing those tenants of the science of reading. So we're looking forward to that. So we're looking forward to that. And last but not least, you know, we do believe we have a strong curriculum here that's grounded in the research. It's served our students well. We feel it's very defensible. So we're looking forward to working through this masterclass and seeing what guidance the state releases next.
Are there any questions? Okay, Jeff, go for it.
Got a couple. Humor me for a second, just to clarify. Does the legislation require the six programs? Or is that the interpretation of the State Department of Education?
That's the, yep, sorry. That's interpretation.
So in the event, though, that nothing changes and we have to adopt one of these six, is the state providing any funding to supplement this mandate?
Well, so that's another concern, is of course, they, they do mention offering funding to districts that don't have the financial means to purchase programs themselves.
That don't have financial means? So Avon would not be, fall into that category, most likely?
I wouldn't imagine.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know. I'm assuming, from what I've seen of a lot of these programs, that some programs are very strong in teaching vocabulary. Another one might be strong in phonics and phonemic awareness. So is, is taking pieces of different programs?
That's not allowed right now.
It's not allowed?
Because that's, in essence, that's what we do. And we have our, we have our curriculum, and the materials that we use programmatically are different, depending on, some are for phonics, some are for reading, some are for writing. And what the interpretation is right now is that lock, stock, and barrel, you have to adopt one of these programs, and that's it. So it's not about the curriculum or the teaching of it. It is, insofar as the tenants are concerned. But insofar as what the mandate has been presented as right now, it is that you adopt one of those six programs, which the majority of the state does not have.
Yeah, and not just in our reading curriculum, but in all of our curriculum. We've always felt strongly that we should write curriculum based on the standards, what our students need, not based on a program. And so this is really counter to that. And one of the reasons, not just Avon, but many districts across the state are so concerned for that same reason, shouldn't we be allowed to purchase a program specifically that meets a certain need? And that's really where the debate is right now.
Interesting.
What kind of, I'm sorry.
I think Jackie had a question first.
So the timing is still, are we thinking this is going to be expected by next school year? To change? Is that what they're kind of requiring of us?
So the guidance that they gave was that if you weren't using the six specific programs, you would submit a waiver. And the, the center that they establish would review your submitted program and then give you feedback in terms of whether or not, you know, it would, it would meet their standards. But again, that's the concern, is that the, the bill really speaks to curriculum, not programs. And so that's why we're waiting for some of that updated guidance. Some of the specific programs that we do use to support our curriculum were originally, their guidance was that they wouldn't be approved. But some of that, after, again, that initial pushback from districts across the state, they've kind of come back and said, okay, I think, you know, we're in a different place now, and we're going to move forward, allowing some of them to be submitted, the ones that we do use in-house and are used, again, pretty widely by many of our neighboring communities and districts across the state. But they just haven't released that waiver process to us yet. So we don't know exactly what they're going to be looking for. But we feel very confident that what we do here in Avon, the curriculum that we have, is strong. And the programs that we have to support it are really well-vetted. And so we're feeling very confident, we're just, it's a waiting game at this point.
And if we did have to adopt one of those programs, do we have any idea what the financial implication would be? Like just a ballpark, like a?
Thank you, Jackie, those are my questions.
Like a broad?
Right on.
Tens of thousands of dollars to implement.
Tens of thousands, like more than 20?
Yeah.
Between 20 and 100?
We don't know as we start the budget process.
Yeah, 50 to 80,000 dollars.
50 to 80, okay.
And have you begun looking at that process, in case that is the direction in which you're forced to go?
So they are doing vendor fairs, and you are able to look at the products. Most of them are virtual, so you can sign on at any time. We have begun to look at them. And honestly, they do the same things that our programs do now. They're just a packaged program versus.
Curriculum.
We like to say we've put a mosaic of items together that we feel really strongly about. So it's a different approach, but.
You may not know the answer to this question, but how many other districts are in the ballpark, are in the same?
We do know the answer to that question.
Same predicament that Avon might be in. And I don't mean it in a predicament in a negative way. I'm just saying, who have chosen to do it as a compilation rather than one packaged product?
Well, that exact number, I don't know the answer to. But I believe the state said 11 districts, or was it 12 across the state?
I think it was 11, but it's so, specifically your question, Lisa, what we can answer is how many use a compilation rather than just a program, so to speak. But what Jess is referring to with that number is that, from what we know of, the state did send out, there was a survey that was done after this legislation was, was passed earlier this fall. And we know that there are, I believe it's 11, it could be 12, districts that do utilize the program, one of the programs they put out. So there are 169 towns and many school districts, and 11 or 12 of them utilize one of the programs that they said you had to.
Only, I'm sorry, I'm missing.
Only 11 or 12.
So all the other 130 would have to purchase a new program?
I don't think there's, I don't know. I can't imagine.
If we applied for the waiver and got it, how long does that last and allow the district to continue using the program?
We don't know.
We don't know.
So that has not been clarified, if we give you the waiver, it lasts for two years, three years? It's just, Matt will give you a waiver, maybe?
There's also, as you alluded to with the question in the beginning, the difference between, there's an interpretation by legal counsel also that differs. So as of right now, at least, for example, if Tom Mooney from Shipman and Goodwin spoke, had a Hartford Area Superintendent Association when we were trying to figure out how to interpret this. And his interpretation at that point, speaking to us, was that the law speaks not to curriculum, but to program, and not necessarily to a requirement that you adopt one of these programs. But the State Department of Education guidelines right now say you must adopt one of the programs. So there's still a little bit of confusion about what that will look like also, the law versus the interpretation of the law.
Is there any reference to model, the model used, like the workshop model? Is that like on the?
So the workshop model, for example, is not on the list.
You cannot use a workshop model, is what they're saying? That's what they're saying?
That's what they're saying. And we use that for, we use Reader's and Writer's Workshop. It's not the only thing that we use, because, for example, phonics are not a part of Reader's Writer's Workshop. So we use different materials for phonics. But again, because we don't use only one program, soup to nuts, that's one of those six approved. If it is interpreted in this way, we would be out of compliance at present.
And our test scores are meaningless. Doesn't matter how successful our kids are with the curriculum we have now.
So there is one positive piece, which is you're, you're supposed to have a approved program for monitoring and tracking your students. And you might remember, we talked about Ames Web Plus as our, so that is one of the approved assessment tools. So that's who they're doing.
Luckily, we could put that in, two years ago, before this happened.
That, so that piece is, is good. And but no, at least at this point, we haven't seen anything specific about how your test scores would impact the waiver or your approval process. And some, and just to, to mention as well is, so specifically what is on the non-approved list is the TC, the Teachers College Curriculum, or, and again, not curriculum, but the Teachers College Program. They've got me doing it, too. But that, that's what's not approved. Some of the programs do use a workshop model, like even some of these approved programs, because that's an approach to working with your students. And I think, you know, if, if we leave you with anything, it's, it's when we think about the vision and mission for our ELA curriculum here in Avon, we really speak to, you know, student voice and choice, independence, differentiation. And we believe that our curriculum and our approach really accomplishes that versus a prescribed program, which is exactly as we say it, prescribed. Takes away some of that voice and choice and independence and differentiation that's important for us, for our students here.
Such a huge impact on teachers, too, who work so hard to learn and develop their skills. Let's hope we don't have to worry about it.
That's the hope.
So again, I thought it would be timely for you to hear something about it, even in advance of us having some of the rest of the answers, because it was mentioned last time, and it has really been progressing quickly. The legislation passed, there was the interpretation of it, there was a lot, many meetings. I think I was at one the day before. We were at our last board meeting, hearing about it. And so we just tried to work quickly to, as Jess said, apply to be a part of the masterclass and to fill the waiver out and to start reevaluating where we were. So we'll update you again and discuss it also at CDP. If you have anything additional to bring by the time we're there. Thank you. Just a couple of other things. We've continued, from a strategic planning standpoint, we've continued our classroom visits with our school administrators. That's been great. We've been out talking about some of what we planned for together as part of our administrative strategic planning over the summer, and our dream big activities that we've talked about, what would we like to be the district that's known for, and what would that look like? And we've gone further with those conversations as teams of administrators and administrators and the faculty and staff in the buildings. And that's been great for us to go out and see, including working further with our dev and decision-making and student performance reviews, and looking at our curriculum and programs and instructional strategies as a result of that. So feeling good about that work and carrying that forward. Also, just back to, back to Shirley, rather say it now than at the next meeting. As you know, her resignation letter is on this agenda because we also have the contract for her replacement. I don't like to use that word, which is also the best I could do in air quotes. We hired Christine Sardinskas. She should be starting with us on December 12th. And that will give us the time for a transition with Shirley and to learn some of the pieces that are necessary, certainly in this role. She is coming to us with experience from another superintendent's office. So we're hopeful the learning curve isn't very steep in that regard. The committee at large chose her. I was a part of that committee, and Shirley has not met her yet, but I think will be soon. And Shirley will continue on with us part-time from afar until the end of the year, because she is going to continue working on the website that, as you know, we've been revamping and trying to repopulate content on since we made the switch and so on. And Shirley is one of our folks who's been through that training and has a district eye for what we would keep on it. And so in doing that, we're able to keep her on for further transition to, for the rest of the school year. Because as you know, just as Shirley retires from, from the physical seat and moves to Illinois, we start getting into the budget part of the year also, which is a heavy lift in terms of my office and Susan's office and the board. So I think Shirley will be able to support Christine and us from behind the scenes doing that also. And like I said, we'll talk about all the rest of that at the next meeting. She keeps coming in and making sure, she says it to me again lately, like I've got, I've got to get it through my skull that she's leaving. Read my letter! I, I just also want to say thank you, as Ms. Chu did, to, again, to all of our schools, school administrators, the faculty, the staff. We had a fantastic Veterans Day celebration on Friday. It was the first one that we had large-scale in person since 2019. And I also want to thank our local Avon VFW, who was gracious enough to come and join us for the day. It is a very long day for our veterans traveling around with us. We start at, we went back to the old way of doing it, and we actually did it a little bit better, too. We had a stop this year that we didn't in the past. So we started at 7:30 in the morning. We met the veterans at the middle school and had breakfast with them. Then we had the middle school program. We left the middle school and went straight to Thompson Brook.
And rode a school bus?
They did. We bring us, we bring a bus, and they are happy to be able to do that, because then, of course, we just take them from place to place and bring them back to the car at the middle school. So we loaded up the bus, and we went to Thompson Brook and had a great program there. Left Thompson Brook, went to Pine Grove, and had a program there. Left Pine Grove and went to the Town Green and did the town-wide program with them. And then came here to the high school, had lunch with them, and a great program here at the high school. And this year, we wrapped up our day at Roaring Brook, which in the past, we had not gone to Roaring Brook, because instead Roaring Brook came to the green. So really, we even had an extra event in this day. So it was, we brought them back close to 3 o'clock, and it was, it was wonderful. The kids loved it. The veterans, I think, really enjoyed themselves coming and being able to interact with the students and in a meaningful way. And I'm just very appreciative of all the attention to detail that was shown from the start, Shirley trying to work with me, and Commander Healy is who you were.
Thank you.
He is the commander of the VFW post. He is a new commander. So it was also the first time for him doing this with us. So all of the firsts that were involved, it still went off without a hitch, and it was great. So just thank you again.
Music was phenomenal. The instruments, the singing, all of it.
Phenomenal.
Phenomenal. All right, so next is our consent calendar. Barring anyone needing to pull something off for greater discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar as it is.
So moved.
All right, Jackie moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is unanimously. All right, under new business, we are at the point where we can decide on the 2022-2023 graduation date. We are allowed to set that in stone so that we can secure a venue. And I'll let Dr. Carnamal speak to that.
So thank you. Currently, our last day of school is scheduled for June 13th. And right now, we are proposing Thursday, June 15th for graduation. That would allow for two snow days. Hopefully, we don't have very many more than that. But as you know, with the change in legislation, I think, three or four years ago, we are allowed to set the graduation date, which is very helpful for both planning the venue and families and students, and also to ensure that no matter how many snow days we have, our students can all attend. Because oftentimes, when you have 10 snow days, for example, and you end up at the end of June, sometimes we lose our students either to, those that are going to the armed services often have dates for boot camp that are ahead of that, and end up unable to be at graduation. And even some of our orientations for, for colleges and universities will take students away before being able to attend graduation. So that was one of the reasons the law was passed, to be able to allow for greater planning for students, families, and school districts. Glad it was passed, because it's been a lot easier since, and we can ensure that we take our seniors through graduation at a time when typically they can all be present. So a survey was done, I think I said that at the last Board of Education meeting, from Dr. Lockhart and the administration here at the high school. And overwhelmingly, of course, there were, there are varying views, and as we would always expect. And I, I think that there are certainly folks that would like to see it here at the high school. There are folks that would like to see us stay at the Polo Grounds. There were folks that mentioned maybe going to Torrington, various options. But overwhelmingly, the majority of respondents to the survey, students, families and staff included, were to try something new this year and go to the Bushnell. So if we approve graduation on the 15th tonight, we will continue, because we really have already started, I just met with Dr. Lockhart again today, looking at the seating arrangements in preparation for the PTO, raffling off the seats at graduation, because it starts this early for us to do that planning. Sorry, Dr. Lockhart. Welcome to be a high school principal. And so we are asking that you approve the 15th.
Are there any questions? All right, then.
I, I, sorry, I have a question. So the last day of school, you're hoping is the 13th?
Well, I'm sure it won't be, because I'm sure we'll have at least a couple of surveys.
So you're hoping that graduation in the last day of school will somehow be closer than this?
I doubt they'll be closer than this. I think what's more likely is that there will be additional snow, there'll be additional days after the 15th, but our seniors will have graduated and be done. And we will, we can plan that, because we can plan their exams and so on by knowing that's the date of graduation. And that's what we've done. And that's what we've done in the last three years.
Thank you.
One year, I think we lucked out and it was exactly the same. Most others, it's within, it has been, knock on wood, within a three-day window. But it all depends on the winter.
Any other questions?
Is the approval for June 15th at the Bushnell? Or is the Bushnell just a asterisk for us?
The Bushnell is just the asterisk so that you know that that is the plan right now. But June 15th, it's to approve the date, not the location.
Thank you.
So I'll make the motion to approve June 15, 2023, as our graduation date for this school year. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Fage. All in favor? Aye. Nobody has opposed, or abstains, it passes unanimously.
It's nice we don't have to worry about weather, right?
Right.
For that.
Yes.
Looking out the window.
Yeah, I haven't turned around in a while. Okay. Our next item is consolidated Title I, II, and III grants, chef settlement for open choice academic and social support grants.
I know Mr. Janney put together the memo and you've seen this. I don't know what you would like to do, if you want to see if there's questions or you want him to review it all.
This is an annual conversation that we have. But for new board members, you might have questions about it. Do you want just a brief summary of what this entails? Perhaps.
I read through it, I think it's really clear.
Okay. You're good. Was there anything you were wanting to say?
No, we've streamlined the process intentionally. So we use the bulk of our grant money to fund our intervention tutors here in the district. Looks well. Maybe we know we can, you know, meet the needs of several students through this approach. So it's worked well, it's not broke, so I fix it.
We have nothing, so we have to fix it at any given moment.
I'm curious about the amounts allocated. I'm just curious about, to the Farmingdale Valley Academy, the Montessori and the web schools.
So if schools within the community have Avon students in attendance, they qualify for funding. And so the process is as simple as the grant itself, you know, alerts us of the schools and what funding, if any, would be allocated to them. We send communication to them about the amount. They let us know if they would like to take that or not. They do have to show us evidence of how they utilize the funding and make sure that it's in alignment with the grant and the, you know, guidelines within. They get it back to us. We essentially cut them a check for their piece and then go from there. Generally speaking, it's small amounts. And many schools turn it down for that reason because it's not a lot.
Do you need action from us on this?
Yes.
Okay. So we are approving the use of the grants? Is that, how would you?
We are approving the application for the grant funds, basically. It would be, we get the money and it's used in the way that we are telling you it is. And then we do report it, as you know, later, back to the board during the budget process and at the end of the year also, so.
All right, Shirley, do you know how to wordsmith that? So, okay. So we approve the acceptance of the grants and how it is used. I will make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody's opposed, that passes unanimously as well. Thank you. So we are at the second point of communication from the public. If, was there anyone else? All right, so moving on to communication from Avon Board of Education members. Is there anyone that wanted to speak?
I just want to reiterate how impressed we all were by the, by the present, the centers, the achieve internships. And I've loved having the opportunity to walk around and talk individually with these kids who, I just kept hearing the word passion, you know? And I certainly felt the passion from them, from their parents. And I just want to thank you, TJ, Maria, if you're still here, again, for making this happen. It's wonderful.
I want to add to that, and I'm not trying to bring every comment back to myself at these meetings, but I did have an internship through Avon High School back in the day that influenced my entire career trajectory. So I just wanted to reiterate how important this program is. And I'm very impressed with the variety that is offered. So keep up the good work, it's awesome to see.
Anyone else? Good. All right. Then I will make a motion to move us into executive session. I will invite in with us Dr. Carnamora, Mr. Medick, and Mr. Janney for discussions concerning and attorney-client privileged communication regarding board member roles and responsibilities in regards to strategic planning. We'll move at 8:15 into the community room. So you can certainly break down and then we'll be all set. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.